Colleen reviewed the letter and thought it was a good idea to close the rest of the offices. That way, yeah, we wouldn't confuse everybody.
Right. So, Bill, what's your take on it? Are you good with this?
Well, after you and I talked earlier today and given it some thought, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Can we take any special measures? I got a feeling that's going to be a long night, but to do any extra cleaning and everything in preparation or regular staff coming in on Wednesday?
It will, we're looking at how we're going to accommodate that. We're actually, that piece of it, worst case scenario is we keep that area, area cordoned off for the Thursday cleaning, but we are going to reach out and talk about what kind of cleaning can be done.
Yeah, I'd encourage if they could make, even if we had to pay extra for an extra cleaning or whatever.
I agree.
It's a good idea to have them come in.
Yeah.
I was thinking of, are we taking any, being that the building is going to be open and be open late, how is our HVAC set up? Is it running, introducing fresh air to the system 24/7? Or are we taking any precautions on that?
It's my understanding that it's doing it 24/7. Chris, do you have a better sense of that?
It is, it's staying on 24/7 to just keep circulating air. And we're keeping hallway doors, stairway doors and stuff open to encourage the circulation of the air.
Okay.
So, everybody seems comfortable with that.
Yeah, I would think any extra measures we could take. Chris, I briefly touched on it at our last meeting and it, it certainly, I don't think it's something that can be done immediately, but can you check with our HVAC vendor and see what type of filters we're using in our system? We're recommending in all state buildings and our lease sites and everything, MERV 13s or comparable.
You said nerve 15?
MERV, M-E-R-V, 13.
Very good.
They have a higher capacity of filtration there, quite a bit more expensive than your routine filters, but given the COVID situation, we're recommending them.
Yeah.
Okay, we can check with them tomorrow.
Catherine, I'll make the motion on your recommendation to close all the offices other than those stated in your recommendation.
Thank you.
Tuesday, the November 3rd.
I'll second that. Posted on the website and in the Chronicle, not the Chronicle, I'm sorry, the Citizen.
Very good. Um, I second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you, Bill.
Do you want to do the meeting the night before at the same time?
Yes, I do. Bill, normally, the night before an election, when the Board of Selectment has a meeting the night before the election, that meeting is typically canceled. So, I want to get your take on it.
All move.
So, moved, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. Okay, just write my own notes here. All right, um, anything else, Chris, on our briefing? I think we've covered.
I think that's it.
Most of the other things that we have are things that are on the agenda. So, let's see, hear from boards, commissions, committees? I don't have any additional information from them. Acceptance of minutes of special meeting of October 5th?
All move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. Um, okay, discuss town office building reopening strategy slash draft policies. Register our voters' room use, use of Knowlton Memorial Hall Auditorium for outside events, parties and scouts. Okay, so the, I talked with, I've gotten a request, couple of requests, or we have. One was from the Boy Scouts to use Knowlton Hall for their PAC meetings. And, and I explained to his, Rob Trotta, that at this point in time, we're not going to be opening Knowlton Hall. And that we have a very strict plan that's in place for the library. But when we talk about trying to use Knowlton Hall for activities, you know, we're talking about not only the fact that people have to socially distance, that is a big room. But there are some activities where they have, in that particular case, you know, for the PACs, not the PAC, but the, I don't know if it's called a trooper PAC, forgive me, I was a girl scout. I was a girl scout and a brownie, I just don't remember what the guys were, or are. The, um, that, there's like eight or nine in the smaller groups, okay? But there's more, many more, when they try to bring them together. So, we talked about using him reaching out to the Boy Scout camp, which he did, and they had the same answer. They're not opening either because of the COVID risk. He also talked with his prayer group in terms of where they meet for it, so they could use that, same risk. Okay, and both of us, it was a good conversation about risk management and the impact of, you know, getting it transmitted through these group settings. So, so that was one person, another person reached out and was interested in holding a birthday party there, who had held one for 20 or more people last year. And so, you can, you can see what's starting to come in. And what I'd like to do is be consistent in our message. And also, let's see if you agree that this is not the time to be opening that building to events, nor is this the time to be opening the town offices to people coming in and out. We don't have the ability to social distance here. We are looking at what could we do if we need to meet in person with someone? You know, to sign documents or whatever. So, I've pulled together the department heads to start to talk through that. We're not in a place yet where we can do that. We have ideas, but with the uptick that we've had very recently in the state, in cases, and in our town, we've had three more over the last week and a half, I think it is. Um, you know, it just doesn't seem prudent at this time.
Yeah, I think we're up to 28 now, last I read.
Yeah, it is 28.
Um, as we've discussed before, I mean, I, I do think that we owe it to ourselves and the community to keep this in mind and to come up with a legitimate plan. And of course, our primary concern for everything we do is, is public safety comes first.
Correct.
And health issues. What I heard is early, is about a half hour ago on, on Channel 3 News, is that the next six weeks are going to be very critical.
That's what I think.
I think we ought to start looking forward to making plans, laying out policy. But I think it's premature to start opening up Knowlton Hall or the Town Hall to the public at this time. I have a bit of a different concept when it comes to the two sheds at the Highway Department, just because I'm hearing about that very frequently. I, I'd love to run by our Health Department, find out what they would think if we only allowed use of one person at a time. And then, of course, they'd have to use social distancing and wear masks. And I think we'd have to have some sort of disclaimers on the doors that people are either leaving things off or picking them up at their own risk.
Who do we have monitor that? The, the staff there?
Yeah.
And, um, will we do, you know, I guess, we'll put it out to them. I'm thinking, will we do any sanitizing of any type? The fact that they're wearing masks is one thing. I've actually heard some conflicting information from people. I think we need to get out the word. Some people are thinking you wear a mask or you stay six feet apart. That's not what it is. It's you wear a mask and you stand six feet apart.
I've noticed that at the transfer station, and I gotta admit, once or twice, I've jumped out of my car and got all the way to the dump dumpster and realized I didn't have my mask on. But it's a matter of education and I, unfortunately, as we have this so-called uptick, which we hope doesn't materialize, but it sounds like it is in other states.
Right.
I think people are going to become more conscious of taking all the precautions that are being recommended to them, at least I hope so.
Actually, we have had some people who come in and they won't wear a mask and they get a little on the belligerent side. So, it's just the way it is.
Transfer station or?
Transfer station.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think everybody's running into that, but I think we've got, it's our responsibility to take a strong stance on it and force it as best we can.
Yeah.
Anyway, getting back to Knowlton Hall and the Town Hall, I think we ought to go forward slow. I think we ought to keep in mind that at some point, we're going to have to have a light at the end of the tunnel that we could shoot for.
And that's actually, when I talked with Rob, I was, I reassured him, I actually want to stay in touch with him and keep abreast of, you know, their need because, you know, they want the kids to be able to get together and they don't have a venue for it. And we don't want to slow down their programs any more than they have to. And, you know, and they're not the only ones that want to use these buildings and so.
For small groups of five to 10, I know they, that they historically have been meeting in the old post office across the street. Are they not using?
Since COVID?
We've, no, not that I know of.
Not me either, okay.
Yeah, but I'm wondering if they're, you know, I know some of the PAC meetings and that, that I've attended, there's three or four kids there and two leaders or whatever. Maybe we can ask for Eastern Highland to give us some opinion on small groups like that. I mean, I don't know, obviously, our, our school is making accommodations for certain groups of people and maybe we can learn from them a bit of how they're handling it.
Funny you should say that, because one thing I did suggest to Rob was that he contact the school. They're not using the cafeteria. They could cordon off an area, there's a single door, entry, egress. Where if they did coordinate off, perhaps they do cleaning much more frequently than we do, and maybe that's just one more little area that they can do. So, I suggested that he contact the school. The other thing is, he started out the conversation by saying that for the PAC, you know, for the troops, they use, they are using the same guidelines that the school is. And of course, he also mentioned masks or six feet. So, I haven't, at the time, I didn't quite pick up on it, so I'll probably, I'll be talking with him anyway, but do another reach out to him to say, are you sure that's what that is? Because I didn't think that that's what it was, the school. But anyway, he was saying that they're really aligning with what the school's doing whenever they have their meetings. So, I thought, geez, maybe that's a location that they might be able to use that's much less risky or whatever you want to call it.
And presently, you, although you, as you say, I didn't realize they weren't using the cafeteria at all, I'm sure they've gotten meetings of small groups of children and whoever else, teachers or whatever.
That may be.
So, they may have policies already in set that can accommodate him. It's a good idea.
Good. Okay, and then the registrars of voters' room use, that is, um, when we're talking about that, Chris, I just want to make sure I've got it straight. That's, um, use of the large conference room, correct?
And the, and the boards and commissions.
And the boards and commissions room, yes, because they need to. So, Bill, here's one for you. When people register, do same day registration, they would come in through that lower door, you know, the regular entry door on the lowest level.
Yeah.
And they would follow a path, it's an arrowed path, go into the larger room where they would be registered and then they could vote there as well. And they would go out the doors that are through the outside from that room, the kind of the French doors.
Picnic table is.
Yeah, so they would go straight out, you know, one, one pathway. What is interesting, if someone does not wear a mask, we cannot deny them the, bear with me.
Opportunity.
Opportunity, the sacrosanct ability to vote. Okay, the sacrosanct. So, what we, but what we are required to do is we are required to move other people back, if there are other people in there. So, it was kind of an interesting wrinkle. Another thing that we have is that for the 75 feet marker that we have in terms of no political materials, if I understand correctly, the think, now think about people coming there, and there might be quite a few, they'll be parking in that parking lot, which is within the 75 feet. And so, you've got bumper stickers, you've got all kinds of things that could be there that violate that. The rules are, as I understand them, it cannot be a candidate's face or name. Anything else goes. Okay, it cannot be their face or their name on a bumper sticker, a flag, whatever. So, we have to figure out how we're going to deal with that one.
Yeah, with everything else we got going on, I'm not going to worry about that.
Just letting you know that it's there.
If we get a complaint about it or something, we can address it on a case by case, but I think we've got bigger fish to fry.
Uh, okay, except we have, you know, certain monitoring that's going on, okay?
Again, safety is.
We don't want to invalidate, we don't want to invalidate anything during this election.
Yeah, and I'd hate to think we put in a, somebody checking as people turn in the driveway to see if somebody has a bumper sticker or something and not letting them.
What I do think we should do is we should be communicating it to the public that that's what they should be doing, in all fairness.
As best we can.
Okay, well, I'll talk with our monitor for the election about that. So, that's all we have under discuss town office building reopening strategy. So, we're good?
So, you'll check with our Health District about?
Yep.
The, the Book of Story and the other shed we have there.
The sheds.
Yep, I'll, we'll give them a call tomorrow.
Perfect. Okay, new business, tax refunds.
None.
What do we got?
None.
Done. Act on approval of dairy orchard tax abatements.
We have the two standards that we get every year, Matt Cousins for Horse Listeners and Tom Knowlton and Kara Spine with both of those.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. Okay, approval of Natrog River Basin Conservation Compact Memorandum of Understanding. Bill, you got the information that we got on this one?
I did.
I'm sorry?
I said I did.
Yeah, and just as a quick summary, this is an inter-municipal agreement for the watershed protection plan for Natrog Healthy Watershed Protection Plan. And the implementation strategies outlined in the plan are non-regulatory and cost effective. And what they, bottom line is that what they want, all of the chief elected officials in these various towns, I'm just looking at the names of the towns, to sign an agreement. And what this agreement would do is it would, one, it was, it's aimed at, that acknowledges our commitment to work cooperatively to balance conservation and growth by protecting and restoring the natural resources of the watershed, reviewing land use regulations and municipal practices and adapting them to be compatible with the goals of the Conservation Compact, supporting efforts to link and maintain ecologically viable habitats and rural landscapes, and ensuring the long-term environmental health, vitality and security of the watershed to enhance the social and economic strength of our communities. I looked through it and I didn't see, uh, let's see, when all is said and done, scope of commitments, sign on to the agreement to demonstrate support for the plan, to be represented on the Plan Advisory Board, to meet regularly to review progress on the implementation schedule, to participate in the development of a public outreach plan, and the eight watershed municipalities shall incorporate the watershed plan into their municipal plan of conservation and development. I've already spoken briefly with the head of our planning and zoning, um, about the plan of conservation and development. Briefly, there was a little bit of a huh, but talked him through in terms of, this is just something, we looked at the plan of conservation and development, we don't have any specifics to this one. That's not that hard to add.
And we did do an MOU with them several years ago, same thing.
Same group?
Yep.
Yep.
Had, had we had Tom Council look at that before we did that several years ago, Chris?
I don't think so, because there's no, there's no financial commitment.
No.
No regulatory?
Nope.
There's really no regulatory, any commitment, it's just that we support conservation of the watershed.
And to me, it sounds like something we should be doing anyway.
Yeah, and I think we're doing it already, for the most part, as best we can.
So, it'd be nice to have it specifically put into the plan.
Commission, I mean, we do have things. I, I don't have a problem, Catherine, with this. I typically would like to get some sort of an acknowledgement from planning and zoning, from inland wetland, from conservation, that they're on board with this, because quite frankly, we'll probably be looking to them to participate in meetings or whatever that this group, I don't think.
Okay, so provided, provided we do the reach outs to the other two boards and make sure that we have their commitment to it. Are you good with that?
Yes.
If we get, achieve that.
I'll make that motion that we accept in concept the proposal.
Yeah.
And we'll sign off on it pending acknowledgement from our appropriate boards that they have no objections or recommendations.
Very good, thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. Uh, okay, discuss an act on the scheduling of a special town meeting, the purpose of which is to form a permanent advisory Ashford School Building Committee, finally, September, Saturday, November 7th at 11:00 AM in Pompe Hollow Park. We put our, I can't remember if we talked about it at our last meeting, but we put the COVID plan, provided that to Zach at Eastern Highlands Health Department. He took a look at it, he was good with it.
Yeah, and I think you guys included a letter from him acknowledging that.
Yep.
That he looked at it. I have a question. Um, whether it rains or snows or a blizzard?
Then we have to reschedule.
Would it make any sense to us include a rain date?
Chris, what do you think? It's not bad. For the, what, the next day, not the, next day, 11 o'clock would not be good.
The following Saturday.
November 14th, I think we do have something going on, do we have something going on there on the 14th?
Yeah, that turkey trot thing.
Yeah.
What time is that?
That's at, bear with me, I've got it here somewhere. There it is. It's at, from 10 to noon.
Where?
Ashford, oh, it's Ashford Memorial Park.
So, it probably won't affect?
We're good.
Poppy Hollow Park.
That would be my only suggestion, I mean, I, I don't know what can happen in November in Connecticut with weather or whatever. So, my suggestion would be that we modify the notice and, and this way we can, we don't duplicate our ad or anything else that we have to do and just note a rain date.
Chris, from the standpoint of proper notification, by putting a date out there, we're using the Ashford Citizen as our best notification mechanism.
Yes.
So, if we put both dates out there, there's no, there's no issue with the two dates, the rain date sounds, or inclement weather date sounds fine to me as a note.
Yeah, it shouldn't be a problem, but, you know, well, I'm going to give it to Sheri tomorrow for the November Citizen.
Very good.
So, I'll make the adjustment.
Bill, thank you for the idea, that was a good one. Um.
Yeah, the only other thing that this past couple of weeks I've been chewing around on my mind, what's left of it, is, you know, whether it made any sense to do some sort of an indoor-outdoor event where, just hypothetically, and I know we've just discussed about Knowlton Hall and we're probably not prepared to do this, but have the event inside Knowlton Hall, we could tie it in with a Zoom meeting for those people that didn't want to come out that could participate, or we could leave the doors open and have people outside at the same time. But I don't think logistically that's going to be possible.
There's, there's two parts to, potentially two issues with them, okay? One is, the social distancing might be difficult in Knowlton, all of that, we'd have to clean that. Um, the other thing is that when you do a Zoom meeting for a Town Hall, you have to, prior to the Zoom meeting, determine in all likelihood, who can actually raise their hand and vote. So, you have to really basically sign them up ahead of time, and in some ways, it kind of disenfranchises anybody who doesn't do it well before the meeting, like the day before, by the day before.
You'd probably have to set up a paper ballot with a monitor that if there were going to be people outside, and I understand with the Zoom.
Yeah.
That, that's a whole different issue, but that may not apply to this, but something I think we ought to, I hope this thing is over.
I can tell you that, um, Chris and I, um, kind of, and then with Sheri, et cetera, and with, the registrars talked about this and like how this could be well managed. And that whole thing with the Zoom piece, that's the toughy. You know, if you can get people in one place, great, you can see their hands, you can check them as they come in, and there is a plan for doing that, even with the, in Pompe Hollow Park, in terms of who can, who can vote.
Yeah.
But when it comes to a Zoom meeting, it becomes incredibly cumbersome to try and do that, and especially when you're doing both at the same time.
Are you thinking that's the case just because we're talking about a town meeting setting?
Yes, when you're talking, when I think about, I think about a town meeting as more than that official town meeting, I think of it as a, a board meeting or a commission meeting or something like that, something where there are minutes, it's recorded, that kind of thing. So, trying to do a combination for those types of meetings won't work. It won't work well, very, very cumbersome for the person who's managing the Zoom meeting. And, you know, you kind of, you can't see the other people and you can't really hear them either.
We do have on the Zoom meeting, I'm just thinking out loud.
Because the school, the school is trying to do this.
We have the ability to know who's participating.
Correct.
And.
But you, you got to vet them right then, or you have to vet them ahead of time.
Thinking out loud here, you know, thinking that we could have a moderator or our organizer, which may be something that that person wouldn't want to take on, could register what the votes are on those people that are in attendance.
What happens with that, I'm trying to think of, um, I guess it's okay that everybody know, that everybody knows how a person voted? Because registering the votes tells you that. Um, it's for a town meeting, for example.
Yeah.
Um, for other things, maybe not.
You know, usually.
Problem is trying to manage who, who can vote.
Can I put my two cents in?
Sure.
Usually for things that are contentious, like filling a vacancy on a board or commission, is what we traditionally, those are things we'd use paper ballots for. Um, this, in my mind, shouldn't be contentious. You know, it's been bandied around enough when you guys appointed the temporary committee and nobody had a problem with the people you appointed to the temporary committee. And for all intents and purposes, you're going to be appointing the same people, except you're switching out Michael Gardner for Jim Rupert, and that's just a building official slot.
And Bill, I think that what you're talking about is for the town meeting that we're going to have, you're good with it being held outside. I think you may be talking about some other kinds of meetings where it might be part inside, part outside. Is that the case? part inside, part outside. Is that the case?
Or, or part, yes, yes.
Yeah.
We're giving people the option that they could go into the school cafeteria or Norton Hall or stay outside or do it.
At their own risk.
At your own risk. Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't think we have to worry. I don't, we should never say nothing's going to be controversial. That's when it turns out to be controversial. But I don't anticipate any controversy with this. And it'll be a good trial run, but I wouldn't want to do this or scheduler to think about scheduling in December or January.
Right, in fact.
So we may eventually come up with where we're going to have to come up with another solution.
And we, I, we've been recognizing that. We, this one we attacked from every angle to try and figure out how to do it. By the way, the lights go off in this office when I'm sitting at the computer all the time. So when you see me go like this, it's because of that. Uh, okay, yeah, and we will keep that in mind. We're, we're looking at every uh, option. So.
All right, I will move the legal notice as submitted with the exception that we'll put in a rain date. Same time for November 14th.
And I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Assessor's recommendation on award of revaluation contract. Let's see, do we have? Let's see, do we have Kara on here? I know I've talked with Kara.
Yes.
Hi Kara.
Here I am.
Hi Kara.
And Kara, if I understand, just as you said before, your recommendation is that we go with equality. And if I understand correctly, as because we're not satisfied with what NICOG came up with in terms of going with visions, correct?
Right, so basically I did not have confidence that Vision would be able to work in Equality, which is a separate software system that that we use for our real estate database. We switched over in, in May. Um, and, and I had asked them if they had done any other if, if Vision or any other contractor had done any work in Equality and they had not. Um, and there was a, a story about another, not Vision, but another rebau company that had to basically get, have Equality come in and, and uh, set up their database so they could work in it, um, in Equality. So I recommend that the town go with Equality. The, the price is competitive. Um, it's 2680 a parcel versus 2695 a parcel for Vision. Um, the only difference is with the payment, um, you know, how that's going to be paid. Uh, because the regional rebau has been something where you pull away every year. Um, you've set aside a, a reserve for that and then NICOG pays them, uh, as you all know. With, um, Equality, th- they are flexible as much as they can be flexible within two fiscal years for payment. Um, so that, uh, is, is the main difference versus I think the annual payments. And I, I, I didn't get a chance to look this up, but I think they were something like a 15,000 a year or so, or 11,000 uh, that we've been setting aside for that. Um, and, uh, the, I was also impressed with their software technological, uh, finesse, let's say, or, or abilities. Um, all the data that we had received in the past, um, in paper form, um, whenever the inspectors went out and inspected things or if they did, data mailers were returned from property residents, all that's going to be scanned into the records that we have. They have barcodes on all this stuff so that we can, um, have everything together and not have to go leafing through files, paper files to find stuff. Um, the other, um, yeah, so that, those were my primary, oh, and the other, and the other advantage was the ability to avoid double entry. So while they're doing, while a rebau company is doing the rebau, they have the database. And anything that the assessor does, the assessor has to basically print out, highlight on a card, and then re-enter when they get the database back. Um, Equality has a software program where anything that I do that is, that is not in the system while they're working on it, will just merge everything onto their system. And, um, so that is, I mean, I had gotten a draft contract. There were a couple of minor things that I would want changed. And then, of course, you need to have it reviewed by council. Um, but that is my, um, recommendation. If you have any questions.
Um, I know, I seem to recall at our last meeting that we suggested that somebody contact town council um, about our agreement. Was, was it with NICOG or who are we talking about?
Right, well, there were two, yeah.
Have we done that, Kara?
Yeah, I, I, I spoke, um, with Duncan Forsyth at Hall, Ern and Sage, who I, I believe that he is who would be doing this work. And, um, he said that, uh, should recommend that you, as the Board of Selectmen, request, um, for his opinion on withdrawing from the regional rebau contract. Right now, you are not in the regional rebau contract because it just ended. This is a new cycle. But if there's anything that needs to be done, um, you know, he could advise on that. And the other, um, uh, item that he would want to give an opinion on is waiver of the town ordinance um, concerning town contracts for purchases and sales. Um, and that would be, the waiver would most likely be under section five. Um, whenever, uh, the, the requirements can be waived by the Board of Selectmen whenever an emergency exists by reason of extraordinary circumstances or contingencies that could not reasonably be foreseen and guarded against. And, um, I would argue that, um, first that, um, the Vision bid went out with us still having Vision. I mean, that it was listed as us still having Vision so that, um, uh, you know, the, the response, um, from, uh, it would, the response from, uh, Vision was basically, we'll work with whatever we need to work with. And, but that was about it. It wasn't very, uh, inspiring as to what they would be able to do. Um, and so the, the timeframe, because the Vision, the bids we got from RFP, from the RFP, from NICOG were from, um, I believe we got those in, in late June. And, um, by the time, um, that was the recommendation from, um, the Board of Directors of NICOG of which way to go. And then I requested the actual contract from Vision, which John NICOG sent me, and I had to, you know, look at that. But I, basically the timeframe was not, um, sufficient to allow us to go out to bid. Uh, and we had a mandated deadline that we'd have to get, um, a waiver from the legislature to postpone a rebound for 2021.
So there's a statutory requirement for us to meet that timeline unless special exception is granted by the legislature?
Right, and there are towns that get this done, but for various reasons, I have not, um, really explored it because I don't think it's something that we need to do.
Legislature that you would get that from or Office of Policy and Management?
No, it's a legislature. I, I don't know the exact details, but I know that when they pass legislation in the past, all the assessors, uh, legislation that's passed, they'll have, you know, um, bridge for revale, you know, postponed from 2020 to 2023 or whatever. They have that in the legislation in, in the public.
If it's a legislative act, we'd even have to wait for a special session for them to do that or their regular session to be convened?
Um, I'm guessing, yeah. I haven't, I have to be honest, I have not looked into it, but yeah, um, it would be in the session. Yeah.
Um, Catherine, you have any thoughts on this?
I think we should go with the recommendation. Um, I think that this is an exception or an emergency situation. It's unfortunate. Um, I think, uh, we, we don't have the luxury of waiting for a special session or a regular session to get the legislation changed to give us an exception. And, um, you know, when all is said and done, the better, the better company to go with appears to be Equality for all of the reasons that Kara put forth.
Well, my, my, my tendency is certainly go with our professionals' recommendation.
Yeah.
Uh, because she's far, far better versed in that than I am.
Or me.
I, I just, um, I'm always more comfortable if we have something for our file indicating that our town council sees no objection with what our actions are.
So Kara, can we pursue that? With town council?
I'm not sure if, if you would request it or I would, but, um, you would need an opinion. Uh, they would review the documents that I, I got from Equality today. Um, and they would, uh, make some kind of recommendation on withdrawing from regional rebound, how you do that. And, um, also on, um, the, you know, recommendation on waiving the town ordinance requirement on contracting.
Catherine, I, I would think that we may, should make the inquiry on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and our assessor.
Yeah.
And ask him to verify that we're following the right procedure. And based on that, I'll make a motion to go with our assessor's recommendation with the understanding that town council will verify that we're following proper protocol.
Very good. I, uh, second that. Any more discussion?
No, just.
I just want.
For all your work.
Kara, yes, Kara?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure, um, because there will be a bill due most likely next year for, you know, an amount that I guess I'd have to put that in, in my budget. Is that, or would that go in the selectmen's budget, the revale?
I, doesn't it go into the capital improvement budget?
I believe so.
Yeah. And so.
We'll clarify that, but do you have a dollar amount?
Well.
Yeah, it's 59,900 for the whole thing.
So it's spread over two years, Bill?
Yeah.
Now, I have a question for Kara. Kara, so the first half of that money, I'm going to call it 60,000 for now. The 30,000 would have to be in, covered in the capital improvement budget for this fiscal year or is it next fiscal year that it starts?
This fiscal year.
So this. So this is something that I think we would go to the Board of Finance about to, um, to let them know the situation.
And I think we've given them a heads up.
Yeah.
This is on the horizon.
Yeah. So let's see, um, did you make a motion? I forget.
I did.
And your motion?
Just one more comment. Thank you for your work on this and I appreciate you giving us a bit of an education on.
Very good. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
And yes, thank you Kara. Very nice. Uh, discuss an act on filling a Board of Selectmen vacancy. Bill?
Yes.
Talk to me.
Hello.
Hello.
You want me to make a nomination?
If you choose.
I would like to nominate Mike Zambro to fill a vacancy of Selectmen on the Board of Selectmen. I've talked to Mike. He's willing to take it on. He's certainly got the experience that I think can help us through some somewhat difficult times. Um, and a willingness. He's got a long history of serving as our town. And, um, I appreciate him, uh, agreeing to be nominated for the position.
Okay, I cannot support that nomination. I'm sorry. Um, did you have anybody else?
No, well, no.
Okay. Um, okay, I still have a couple of people that I'm considering. Um, our timeframe for the 30 days is up next Thursday, I think. Then it will go to the town clerk, then it will go to, uh, the members of the boards appropriately. Um, so, and then we had that, uh, there are 30 days beyond that to make the decision. So I think we have a little time. Uh, I am really delighted that you and I work well together as we go through all of this.
We have to.
Yes, we do. So thank you. Okay, preliminary review of land use clerk applications. Bill, I know that this, they were here, you haven't had a chance, right?
Can I just say?
Yeah.
If you so choose to call a special meeting to meet the deadline of next Thursday, I would make myself available for us to do that, to fill.
I'm sorry, say that again?
If you so choose, you said you had a couple of people you were thinking of and you wanted to make a nomination. I'm not saying I would support it or not.
I know.
But I would, I would make myself available, uh, for a special meeting if you felt you needed to do it with the timeline expires.
All right. Thank you for the offer. Uh, preliminary review of land use, uh, land use clerk applications. As you know, we received 19. One of them didn't make the deadline, so we have 18. Uh, I know they're here for you to take a look at and what's been set up, bear with me as I fade from the camera here.
Yeah, Catherine, just, just so you're aware, I was there last night and I did, I did review all 19. I know I didn't leave you a note.
Actually, what you need to do? To see the sheet?
Let me just finish.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I selected my top six. Um, I would prefer not to rate them until I can review those six again and perhaps talk with them. I don't know what your pleasure is on where we would go from here, but
actually.
Down to, to a six. I didn't leave you a note or put it on that sheet. Uh, I could certainly stop by and do that, but I don't intend to to rate them one through 10.
Okay, so the way that this works is that when we interview these people, first of all, we need to have the, the top ones that we want to talk with. So we need to have a sense from each of us that's Michael, you, Jim, and me of who we think the better candidates are because we don't want to interview all of them. Okay, there are some that clearly, um, may not be appropriate for the job. So that's one thing. The other thing is, is that when we interview them, we have to schedule those interviews and we have to ask them the same questions. We have to be consistent about how we do it. That's the only fair way to do it. So what we're trying to do by having a certain amount of ranking is for us to get a sense from each of us which ones we think are most suited for the position. And that's the only purpose of the ranking. So, you know, if, uh, if we have people, you know, if we have a, a couple of them that are ones for all of us or twos or threes, then those are the ones that I would think that we would be talking with, uh, first. And if we felt that they didn't work out, then we would start going, I guess, further down the line. So that's the only purpose behind the saying, hey, how did, what's your take on this one based upon their resume? Their, what they say their qualifications are. But it, it also becomes, who are we going to talk to? And when we talk with them, we have to do it through Zoom. And we have to schedule that. And we want to schedule that, I believe, in a way where, you know, we pay for our Zoom meetings. And, um, we want to make sure that we've time boxed them. So you have one candidate, just like we do with, uh, when we are, uh, put out for an RFP and we have vendors come in and talk with us. Okay, for example, uh, uh, RFPs for the Board of Finance. You know, we'd pick the top three that responded if we had three. Most times we had at least two and we would have them commit. And we would have them come into a Board of Finance meeting, and we would interview them there. They would do their, their dog and pony show. We'd interview them, but we would time box it in a way so that the first set would, the first group would be done and out of there before the next set came in that night. We have to look at the efficiency of how we can do it, because it's going to be all four of us interviewing them at the same time. So I know I'm going to go through, I have started, you know, looking at them. I wanted to look through all of them and then go back through, maybe a little bit like you, and go, okay, which ones do I, now that I've read all of them, which ones kind of rise to the top for me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to assume that you're going to be coming in, again, you said looking again, right, at these?
Yeah, I, I went, like I said, I, I spent over an hour there and went through a brief, brief summary of all of them and.
A little light reading.
Myself, the six that I think are worthy of us considering for the position.
Okay, so I, that's the purpose behind the ranking, if you will, and I noticed that even for Jim, when he went through, I don't know if you saw his numbers?
No.
He might have done it today. I'm not sure.
His numbers, there were no numbers on the sheet at the.
Okay, so when he went through, he had three ones. He had one, two, he had one eight, he had four seven, five sevens. So that's how, it wasn't just one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. It was, he, he wasn't overly specific. And it was just which ones, you know, I wouldn't expect that we would be talking to, he didn't have any threes, so I would expect that based upon all of us going through, and, you know, let's just say all of us came up with someone who is a one or a two. Good chance we're going to want to talk to that person.
Yeah.
If we had someone who came up as a one and somebody else put it as a seven, it's still a good chance we're going to talk to that person.
I understand the concept.
Yeah.
I just want to let you know how I did my initial review of them.
Well, and mine's just a read through upfront and then go back now that I've got relativity to work with.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you could, you know, complete your review, Chris, when do you feel we should be ready, have our answers back as to who we want to talk to? Chris?
I'm, I'm thinking, I'm looking, I'm looking at. If you guys should, can have something by Friday, we can start figuring out how you're going to interview, what kind of venue you're going to use, and get in touch with the ones you want to interview on Monday, and set some kind of a schedule. What, what are you looking at for times? Half hour each?
Bill, what do you think?
I think twenty minutes is more than enough, fifteen, twenty minutes.
Hmm.
From that, we may boil, from that, we may boil it down to, to two or three, I, I, who knows, and then we may want to give them a little longer.
Okay, so I'm thinking we're going to be stacking them next to each other in our interviews.
Yeah.
Um, so.
We can find out how the school did it when they interviewed for the business manager. Did they stack them, Cheryl?
They, yes, they did them one after another.
And do you have a sense of, well, that one, they might have done a longer interview. I'm not sure.
They were still about fifteen to twenty minutes.
Okay.
Initially, yeah.
So Bill, are you thinking twenty minutes or half an hour?
I think half hour is too long.
Okay.
If I was the favorite, I'd say fifteen to twenty minutes at the most.
Yeah, they scheduled them for half, in half hour increments and that.
That's right.
Then, then we could, had time, we had ten or fifteen minutes to discuss, you know, how the interview had gone afterward before the next interview we came up.
That's how, that's how I've done it in the land that I come from and as well.
Me too.
Good. All right, so half hour increments, which gives us time to do basically a twenty minute interview, then a quick ten minute touch base, all of us, and then the next person is, is up. And Chris, how does that sound to you?
Like a plan.
Like a plan, good.
You know, if we can get somebody, and I don't know if we can, to start the beginning of, after the election.
Yeah. That would be very good.
Yeah.
Okay. So waiver of executive session to discuss a personnel matter. Bill, you have the information on the personnel matter. This has to do with an increase for our executive secretary, executive administrative assistant?
I do.
And you also have the letters that we received from the town clerk, the treasurer, the tax collector, Ralph Fletcher. And I also have comments that Chuck Funk provided to me today because he's been busy on his, you know, as you know, his mom passed away. So he, what he did was verbal, and he just asked me to take them down, and I read them back to him, and so I have his comments as well. Um. I can say this, I, now that I have been here sitting in this role and learning as much as I can learn, I can tell you that Christine has been simply invaluable. She's been, she's, I see how she interacts, what she organizes, what she follows up on, and I see how timely it is. And I do think that she should be paid commiserate with the salaries of the other key people in this organization. So I'm going to read just a couple of highlights for anybody who is interested. That would be, let's see, who do we have on here? Paul Varga, I guess, is on there. Some of the comments that we've received that are in these letters are. My complete endorsement of an equalizing pay increase. This would bring the executive's administrative assistant's salary annual pay rate in line with the town clerk, tax collector, and assessor's pay. Position is complicated and multifaceted. Works in conjunction with all other boards, commissions, departments, employees within the town, serves as liaison to the town's council, council of government, state agencies, and general public, to name a few. I have actually experienced that since day one, sitting here. And I can tell you that is, it is amazing. Responsible for filing meeting agendas and minutes, assisting with Board of Selectmen correspondence, and assisting the board on other duties as requested, recycling coordinator, reporting of that tracking of refuse haul from our transfer station to the state, steep and other grants are written and tracked by that person. I've got another one, critical to the success of our overall municipal government, center of the support web for the town. Dependable, committed, and responsible, exceptional creativity and flexibility, which I've seen, to deal with the juggling of multiple competing demands. A constant during the many transitions in the elected office of first selectmen over the years, which is true. Here's another one. Past twenty-two years as administrative assistants in the selectmen, management styles change, politics change, but the position has been constant, and she has been able to offer her knowledge and a stable environment throughout those years, these years. I can tell her, and would not have gone as smoothly without her guidance. That's what I'm experiencing. So I can tell you that for a fact. And then from Ralph, from grant writing, duties and responsibilities, let's see, is the responsibilities shouldered by the selectmen's office have grown considerably over the years? Duties and responsibilities given to the selectmen's administrative assistant can be compared to the town's department heads from grant writing and serving as a liaison with town departments, boards, commissions, and state agency, able to provide members of the Board of Selectmen with information necessary for them to do their jobs. I, I can add to that as well. One of the things that I have experienced from day one is that what Chris has done is she has tons of information in her head, documented in a number of different places, based upon what those things are, and that she has been very open with sharing all of that. There's been no reluctance at all. She's been awesome. And I, I end up thanking her every day, okay? I have worked with a lot of administrative assistants. I have worked in places where I came in and the person was there and maybe not quite of the caliber of Chris, and not necessarily as organized in terms of providing the information. I'd also like to, I did take it down Chuck's comments. He said she's highly responsive to all requests. She provides information in a clear and concise manner. He gave an example about how she was able to clarify the wagon shed property issues, et cetera, for him. That was just one example, and how she's provided key updates as we've gone along. He said she researches, clarifies statutes with, and with very timely responses, which is also what I've experienced. Also, he remarked on the annual report, her dedication, the structure, the excellent writing skills and proofs. He also mentioned that this year she is not working with that group, and they are struggling. Okay, or not with that board on there, so they're struggling to get it all together. So he also said she keeps him up to date as the budget progresses, and he's asking questions, taking a bit of the load off of the first selectmen to answer all of these detailed questions. He said she's articulate, and I think the thing that I, that struck me is she really actually, with her history and with her relationships with so many people in the town, long time relationships, she has a pretty good sense of the pulse of the public, how they'll react to something, and what, that's one of the things that I've found has made it so that when she starts to put together a communication that will go to the public, I work, you know, we work together on those things, I find that she has a sense of how the public will react to it. And we refine it based on that. And that's, that's pretty invaluable for me. So let me think if there's anything else. One, the one thing I do have is that she seems to be everywhere. I don't need to ask. She's already putting it on my desk or saying, hey, here's something you need to follow up on, or here's the information you're going to need to make a decision on that. So that's my summary for you. It's also, you know, drawn from the letters that we received from all of these people. So I want to find, get your feelings on this, so I would like to get it taken care of. We're not going to have a meeting in that November meeting. I'd like to get it addressed timely here.
You're done?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. First of all, I, I, as you're aware, I just heard about this late Friday afternoon that it was going to be put on the agenda, and you gave me a brief idea what your feelings were on that.
Yeah, and you got the letters.
And subsequent to that, I got the letters. One, one bit of an error there in some of the letters that you wrote, mentioned twenty-two years. I made a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen some twenty-nine years ago to hire Chris Avikoff.
Nineteen ninety-two. I thank you.
And, and I've, I've never regretted that. And while I probably should have told her many more times than I have, although I have in the past, told her how much I do appreciate her, her attention to detail and her work for our community. And I think we're lucky to have her and have been lucky to have her. When I first met her, she was assistant town clerk and a very active EMT on the fire department for many, many years. So her service, I forget which one said the twenty-two years. That may be her service to the town. Chris's goes back even further than that. Normally, and I certainly want to go, I'm assuming the lack of executive session here was at Chris's request. Normally, I would not recommend that because I think we have to be very candid in our comments, for the most part, when we're dealing with this sort of scenario.
Actually, it is, it's the, at the discretion of the person.
That's why I said Chris Avikoff.
Yeah.
Because I, I, I normally wouldn't recommend that. But it is what it is, and I appreciate her wanting to be open about this. I'm a bit uncomfortable with several things, to be honest with you. And they're not Chris. One, I'm a bit uncomfortable with the way this was calculated and averaged out over our other department directors' salaries. To be technical, Chris is not a department director. The first selectman is. The other three offices that we're talking about, the assessors' office, the treasurer's office, town clerk, all run by statutory requirements, certified and recertified staff. It's, it's a bit different. And I'm not saying this to diminish anything that Chris does. I'm well aware of what she does. When we're in a time when the state, the last I got a notice, we were at two point one in deficit, billion dollars, excuse me, in deficit. I don't know what our grant funding or any other funding is going to look like a year from now. And I don't think there's anybody. I understand the state, we have a roughly three billion dollar rainy day fund. I can't imagine the governor or the state legislature draining that fund to meet whatever deficit we're in. Needless to say, we're in very tough times right now with this COVID situation alone. And I frankly am very uneasy about spending more money. And I understand in your letter, you indicated, Catherine, that we do have surplus in our salary fund right now in the Board of Selectmen.
Correct.
But we're looking at something here that has longer term consequences to the budget than just this fiscal year. I hope Chris is with us another twenty-nine years, but I'm a bit uncomfortable doing it this way. What I'd like to do is have the Board of Selectmen sit down and review her job description. I'd like to contact Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. I'm not sure Council of Governments has such a thing, but I'd like to look at salary levels in other towns for not only Chris's position, but also for the other positions that we've discussed. I had brought this up a number of years back, and I've tried to bring it up pretty much annually. I think it's something that we owe ourselves, plus our staff, to get an other idea of what other towns are paying for, and, and, and looking at towns that have the population that we do. And looking at, at all of our positions as to where we are on scale with those. If we're drastically under, I think it needs to adjust, and I think if we're drastically over, we should be aware of that for our own information. Those are some thoughts. Why, at this point, giving one individual, and I'm not saying she doesn't deserve it or questioning anything she does, basically a seventeen percent increase.
Sixteen point five.
Is outside, outside of the budget, normal budget process is problematic to me.
I think what happened was this was not, it was overlooked in the last budget process, to be quite candid, based upon what I've looked at. So let me, let me finish. It has been my experience that when your peers, and I do consider these department heads her peers, when your peers are the ones making the recommendation, when your peers are the ones making the recommendation, they, they, they have looked at it and they have found it to be inequitable. When they're the ones making the recommendation, those are the ones that are the most meaningful. It is not necessarily the manager, if you will. It is how is that person's role and value perceived by the peers, the people they work with every day in the trenches? And so I take what they, what they provided very seriously. I do think that she has been underpaid. Um, and I definitely, I have to tell you, you don't find her sitting down here very much because she's running around taking care of stuff. And I would hate to have a situation where um we did not have her doing that.
One, one of the things we have to keep in mind also, and it was at her request and our acknowledgement and appreciation, she does it. She's also paid a salary from the K-9 fund.
That should have nothing to do with her, that has nothing to do with her responsibilities in this role.
If I could just finish. Her responsibilities in that office do involve whenever she's needed to leave the office and take care of those responsibilities.
And
Times that that, and it may not have happened recently within the two weeks or so that you've been first selectman. But it does happen and she's available for that to do it as the best of her ability at the time. But her salary of 53 or 54,000 is, is, does not include that 11 or 12,000 or whatever ends up from the K-9.
Again, the K-9 role is entirely separate from her responsibilities as executive administrative assistant. What I do want to tell you that you may not be aware of is she works on weekends. She works on Thursdays. I know because she's been working with me. Um, we're talking on Sunday. We're talking on Saturday. We're in here on Thursday. So I think uh what you may not know is that that goes on, or she's in here alone. I mean, even before I became first selectman, she was in here alone on Thursday, working on something. She was working on the grant that we needed to have. So I don't want you to think that the time that she has her other job is taking away from her ability to do her overall responsibilities here because it's not.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think I said that either. I, I just said that during her normal, normal working time in the office.
Yeah.
There are, which we need the office covered. I mean, it's nice. The first selectman is there as much as possible. But during those times, she is available to do the other job that we pay her to do.
As needed. I haven't seen any of it in the last four weeks.
I, I, I cannot support, I know you didn't put this in a form of emotion. I'm glad to give it more thought and if you want to carry it to our next meeting to go along with that, but I'm not in a position where I will support the increase at this time.
All right, so um I'm trying to think of what's going to get you to, to be able to support that.
I would like to see the latest study from CCM on salary comparisons. I know when I was on their Board of Directors for eight years, I think we used to do it every two years. I have no idea whether they still do that or not, but if they do, I'd like to have that accessible to you and I.
For like sized towns.
For like sized towns. And we used to, on the board of, with CCM, we used to categorize it and they were, they were by
I know.
Within 5,000 or whatever. We were the smaller of the two. And we also have to make sure because what Chris does, she has no assistant or whatever, and that we would be comparing whatever position that would be listed in there with a comparable position. So we're comparing apples to apples.
Say that one more time.
We would have to make sure that we're aware of if they're giving us a salary for an AA or an EAA, as you may want to call it.
EAA.
That they're comparing it to somebody that is running a one person office like, like Chris is doing. Like, like with our assessor's office or a tax collector's office, we used to have assistants in there. They have gone without that now and done a yeoman's job on both of those positions. And that's why I think their value down there, if they, if it comes in that their salaries are a little higher than towns that do have an assistant tax collector or an assistant assessor, I think, I think we're lucky to have them for whatever we're paying them above what the, what the averages may be for other towns.
Well, I'm disappointed in your position. Um, because I'm here and I see what gets done and I hear from the other people. And um, like I said, this is not a person who just leaves the job and goes home. Okay, and I'm not, I don't know what it's like in other towns, but that's not what it is here. And uh this is a person who has been pretty devoted and dependable from changeover to changeover to changeover. And um I find her creativity really great. It's very, very helpful and saving work, so. Um, all right, we'll get you the information you need. And we'll go with that. Uh, we may or may not uh have a special meeting before.
Okay.
Because we canceled the other one.
Yeah.
Like I said, I want to get it taken care of. I don't want it just hanging out there.
If you chose to call one or wanted one, I would make all I was saying to that was that if you chose to have one, I would make myself available for it.
Oh, I, yes, I understand that. I was just letting you know there could be one. Uh, all right. What else do we have tonight? We have remarks for the good of the board. Do you have any remarks, Bill?
I'm all set.
So am I. I want to thank everybody for participating.
Thank you very much.
A motion to, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Good night.